Team and the head coach for Matanzas High School. I'm here to write and express the urgency of our aquatic programs in the community. It continues to rise, but the current facilities are inadequate to sustain these increasing numbers of users. This is especially critical for our youth, where you access swim lessons and invite and and is vital to ensuring their safety around water. Swim education is more than recreation activity. It is a life-saving necessity, particular in Florida, where accidental drownings are a significant concern. As you may be aware, Florida statute, also known as Water Safety Bill, outlines the importance of promoting water safety education, including the need in community partnerships that can offer swim lessons aligned with the statute's guidelines. Currently, Palm Coast Aquatic Center is the only facility in community offering swim lessons without Belt Air Swim and Racket Club and now AquaFin closing. It has become clear that this is not enough to adequately serve our population, especially with the increasing emphasis on water safety education across the state. We respectfully request the city considering building a proper aquatic center that can offer a full range of aquatic activities, including competitive swimming, water aerobics, and, most importantly, swim lessons focused on our youth's safety. By partnering with other organizations that specialize in swim instruction, we can work together to ensure all residents, especially children, have access to necessities, resources to prevent drowning incidents. Can the city support burden of future drownings if we do not take proactive steps? I believe the addition of comprehensive aquatic center would not only provide recreation and athletic benefits, but also be significant investment in the safety and well-being of our community. Residents of the city and a foundation, so we need to be able to support the amenities in the community, and this is one that has been lacking for a very, for 50 years. The pools are 50 years, they're falling apart, we're no longer putting any money into these, and with budget cuts, this is not where we're going to be adequate comparatively to Putnam County, or are we going to be in comparison and etiquette to Ponte Vedra? We need to be able to have these amenities, and it's important when bringing people into the community at the level of educational people that want to move here and to set up our children safely.
Thank you for your comment. Is there a next speaker? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jeannie Duarte. I just want to say bravo. Congratulations on your performance Tuesday night, four hours and 15 minutes into the meeting after most people had left. How much did we pay you to waste time to plot against us? Well, I helped you rewrite your intentions in layman's terms on my time and my dime. You're welcome, here it is. When the binding terms of the sovereign power gets changed in way of eliminating provision 3E, having to do with government revenue, taxes, monetary and fiscal policy pertaining to unfunded projects, which sets boundaries for the council to be able to access or have the power to agree to any long-term arrangements between a government and private sector, the council or city will then possess the power to decide expansions in way of forcefully mortgaging the future of Palm Coast residents to pay for charges imposed on new buildings, development, and maintenance of public infrastructure, such as roads, water supply network, and sewage treatment facilities, react to emergencies, that still is a confusing thing there, as well as consume accessible stocks, bonds, real estate, bank deposits, contracts, loans, CDs, funds, et cetera, including, which includes, without limit size or quantity, Alvin bonds. If indeed you have already violated the current existing charter, you are deemed traitors. Therefore, I demand the removal of this from the ballot in its entirety immediately. And a forensic, I propose a forensic audit. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Are there any, yes, sir.
Good evening. Jeffrey Seib. I am adding my voice to those already calling for a temporary tabling of the 2050 version of the comprehensive plan, because it has not been scrutinized at the level needed to ensure that the overwhelming calls from the Palm Coast public for what they want in this plan apparently have been overlooked or ignored as time has gone by. Comprehensive plans are generalized explanation of how the city's growth is to occur. The 2035 comprehensive plan is in place now, and as a blueprint or general structure for growth is mixed in its outcomes. The current plan was scheduled for evaluation and review in 2035, so we are not under the gun for immediate action on this 2050 version. Special interest considerations in the plan were made evident at last week's council meeting, where council member Pontieri brought up a zoning change in the future land use map that surely didn't come from all those folks like me attending all those meetings. Then the special handling and special regulations for massive new developments west of US-1 that have 15 to 20-year-old development orders that specify what they will do today, like building the Loop Extension Road, have been overlooked. I've been concerned right from the start that mistakes like this may occur in the document once it left the light of day. This version is not ready for prime time, and now makes it even more apparent that this council, soon to be departing except for one, should put off any action until the new council is seated and can peruse these chapters, maps, sections, and the wording contained in regulations for development orders to identify additional changes that may be needed or may have been incorrectly added to the plan. As others have stated, and I add my voice, the new city council will vote to return to this 2050 comprehensive plan version without allowing any alternative wording, regulations, or land development code changes to be put into place or set in stone. So let's not waste any more of our tax dollars and hold off on this, as with the city manager's selection, until next year. Thank you.
Candy Stevens, P section. I happen to agree with Jeff on the 2050 plan. I really think since we're going to have a whole new dais pretty much up there, except for Teresa, the people that are voted in are going to be more of what we want and more of our voice, obviously, because that's why they got voted in. Sir, but I would like you to answer to us on how all this was missed for all this time. How was this company allowed to not put their money where they're supposed to, and then you guys take our grant money and use it instead? I don't understand how that was missed with all the people that we have and all the staff that we have and the attorneys that we have. I don't understand how that stuff is missed, because that's what's hurting our economy here and hurting our taxpayers, why we're wondering where our money's going for the infrastructure. Now we find out where it went. It went all, it went out there. When you have taxpayers like me that have been here 10 years, some 20 years, that have been paying into the city to keep it the way it is, and then we now we question where the money was going, and now we can see where it went. So I really think that we do need a forensic audit. I also think that you guys need to hold off on putting that plan through until we can reword things, get the bonds off the ballot. Nobody wants to vote for that. Why should we pay for something that Ray and E should have paid for? They already took $109 million from us, and I want you to also tell us how we're going to get the $109 million back. Are they going to build something in exchange, like maybe a water plant that we already need? Are they going to build some drainage that we already need? You guys can't let this money go. It has to come back to the citizens. We paid into that. We are owed that money. We're owed something for that money. And that young lady that was talking, we would have the water, the pool that you're talking about, the pool center, if they would have built it like they were supposed to, we would already have that, wouldn't even be a complaint right now. So hold off on the 2050 plan, and please get this stuff off, the bonds off there, because nobody's going to vote it through. You should have voted no.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Cornelia Downing Manfree. I'm here this evening to talk about the budget and the millage rate.
Do you want to, we have that as an agenda item coming up. This is participation in advance of any items on the agenda.
Okay, but in, I just reread the handout, and the handout says, if I'm addressing something on the agenda, to be precise. So when do I make public comment on agenda items?
When we get to the millage item on the agenda.
Oh, so you'll have a new public comment?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, required by statute.
Okay, it's not in the write-up that way?
I apologize, but that's, it's part of the plan. So if you could hold off just for a little bit, we can be more concise. Thank you. Is there another speaker that would like to make public comment at this time?
Good evening. My name is Ken McDowell. I live in C-section. And this is serious, folks. When each of you were elected, you didn't know a whole lot about city government, except one of you was mentored by the previous mayor and wears that on their shoulder like a big epaulet. And all of you learned your jobs through these people behind me back here in the city Over a year ago, August 1st last year, I got up here and demanded a forensic audit. Okay, tonight I was told as I got here that finally, a briefing is going to occur by an auditor. And so for a year, you guys have been slow-walking this thing, because you found out what a forensic audit was. But you guys come and go. The problem with Palm Coast is the people that trained you to sit up here and be a city council person. That's those people behind me. The city, as again, never had a forensic audit, and it's rife with cultures. Some people have even said collusionistic fraudsters. That's a new term. I made the term up. But you know what it is. It's here. And I hope each of you look over your shoulders, because people are coming, and they're going to be here. So that's all I have to say. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Ashamed.
Next speaker, please. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment to me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. And come back to the dais. Is there any additional comment?
I have none at the moment.
I just want to make a clarification, since I was the one who brought up the DRI issues. The state appropriations that have been granted, they are state appropriations. Now, obviously, we all pay state taxes, right, in a way, but I don't want there to be a misconception out there that monies brought in by the city of Palm Coast specifically have been used as state appropriations. Okay, so those are different things. So just for transparency and for everybody's edification, state appropriations that are paying for what we've talked about as the Loop Road are not what we, as the city of Palm Coast, collect in taxes. So I just want to be very clear about that. Other than that, I have no comment.
Thank you. Councilman Clufus, any comment?
No, but thank you, Councilwoman Pontieri, for correcting some of the misinformation that's out there and trying to get ahead of it, because I had seen that perpetuating on the social media. So thank you for that, but no, no further comments.
Thank you. We have one presentation this evening under Agenda Letter E, which is the final proposed fiscal year 2024/2025 budget and revised fiscal year 2023/2024 budget. So, city manager, would you like to introduce the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. During your last city council meeting on August 27th, where we reviewed the budget, you gave us a little bit of homework. I thought it would be beneficial to review, not only with city council, but also to the public, your strategic action plan and what's included as far as policy envisioned for in the budget that you will hear tonight. So I'll jump right in. This is meeting 10 out of 11 that we've started the budget process back in March, and during that time, we also conducted your strategic action plan. Your objective number one is to identify savings and conduct a revenue and impact analysis to fund a property tax rollback for the coming fiscal year. We have brought you a balanced budget that has reduced the millage from 4.2570 to 4.1893 without a reduction of service level. Objective two was to conduct a solar evaluation of city assets to identify opportunities and utilize this energy source to achieve cost savings. That feasibility study is included in this budget. Design and implement a citywide plan for road repair and road safety. This budget includes new streetlights on five arterial roads, which is Sesame, East Hampton, Royal Palms, Rimfire, and Palm Harbor. There's an increase in electric costs in the public works budget to accommodate this request. Also, for the road repair, we are repaving 22 lane miles next year from Palm Coast Parkway east and westbound from I-95 to US-1, and also conducting micro-surfacing of 22 residential lane miles. Your objective four is design and implement a citywide plan for swale maintenance and performance. There's a new swale team that's added, as well as a new culvert cleaning crew. You also asked us to prioritize M-FIL lots and how we're conducting that review with your new technical guidelines on new houses. There's a engineering technician included, as well as a finance technician to make sure we are recouping the costs that we need to. In objective five, continue the saltwater canal dredging initiative. You asked us to move forward on Phase Two analysis, which is the pre-application investigation and canal evaluation, and that's included in this budget. Objective six is optimize citizen information from and engagement with city government and consistently ensure an excellent customer service response. During one of your budget presentations, you asked us to include an IT programmer to build out a mobile app, and that has been included. Objective seven is design and produce a capital improvement plan focused on technology for city government. As you passed in your business meeting on Tuesday, we are going to be doing some data center improvements. Also in this budget is call center AI enhancement, ADA compliance for our website, and a new merchant services contract that will be coming soon, and also some additional replacement hardware. In objective eight, which is enhance current economic development efforts to result in better-paying jobs and attract major employers such as healthcare, we are working with the University of Central Florida with the Small Business Development Center, as well as there's an increased budget for marketing industrial sites. Objective nine is enhance transit options and citizens' awareness of these services in partnership with the county government. There's staff time included in our budget to accommodate this request. Objective 10 is enhance housing options for the workforce and senior citizens by conducting an assessment of current housing stock and considering available public policy options to increase supply. Again, there's staff time considered in this budget. Objective 11 is identify dedicated funding sources for arts, cultural, history, activities, and facilities. Staff is working on the percentage for arts ordinance and future solar funds, that was per your direction, as well as increased funding for the Palm Coast Historical Society and FC3. Objective 10 is implement the Parks Master Plan. Included in this budget is additional inclusive programs, as well as increased program of recreational activities and maintenance of our existing facilities. And objective number 13 is prioritize Palm Coast infrastructure to address current needs and anticipate future growth. The maintenance and operations complex is a top priority of yours, and that is forthcoming on your upcoming agenda. You asked us to develop a utility strategic plan to implement necessary water and resource, water resource infrastructure. That is included in this budget. Seek opportunities for the community center to relieve parking pressures. You have a future agenda item on this topic. Evaluate options to repurpose Fire Station 22 to preserve its historical value and expand visitor awareness of Palm Coast. That's in conjunction with the community center parking pressures. Initiate construction of Fire Station 26 and replacement of Fire Station 22 to enhance the fire station's response times and improve public safety. Both of those projects are in your capital projects budget for this year. And develop a comprehensive communications plan to keep the public well-informed about capital projects and ongoing infrastructure improvements. And this summer, we launched the Palm Coast Progress, which is focused on trying to communicate those infrastructure needs to our community. At our last meeting, we discussed your policy direction of level of service, which is number one and foremost is prioritize public safety. You asked the city, the county, and the sheriff's office to work together in a joint workshop. We held numerous of those. At those meetings, we determined a level of service analysis, where the sheriff's office has requested to add nine new deputies. Four of those have a delayed start. There is a, per our contract with the sheriff's office, there is a contractual increase, and there is an increase in the fire department's budget. Second is protect our quality of life. We have included in this budget an enhanced code enforcement, maintain beautification of our program with city medians and right-of-ways, maintain programming and amenities in parks and recreation. You asked for additional hours at the Southern Recreation Center, as well as additional grant funding for cultural arts with management with FC3, and protecting our quality workforce, which is a COLA at 3.9% for our employees, and that's the same as the county and the sheriff's office. And you also took action for our city's health insurance benefits. And finally, you asked us to come back with some information about your general fund reserves. As according to your policy, unassigned fund balance over 20% may be transferred to the disaster reserve fund if necessary to meet the fund balance, or to the capital projects fund. Our target, our policy target is 20%, as per the city auditor's external audit presentation to council on March 19th of 2024. The recommended target is 25% of next year's expenditures. You also asked us to do an analysis from 2016 to present, and the chart is indicated below of that request. And that's all the information that I had for you, and Helena and Gwen would take it for next steps.
Very good, thank you. And apologies just for a minute. I didn't take a moment to recognize the sheriff, and sheriff, we thank you for being here to support our budget work, so we appreciate your presence tonight. Helena, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Helena Als, Financial Services Director. I also have Gwen Regsdahl. She's our Budget and Procurement Manager, and we're here today to present to you the fiscal year 2024 revised budget, the proposed tentative millage rate, and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. This is a presentation overview. We will be going over the general fund, proprietary funds, special revenue, capital funds, internal service, and truth in millage. This is a summary of the general fund revenues. There were no changes from your presentation of August 27th. As you can see, Ad Valorem is still the largest revenue source for the general fund, accounting for approximately 65% of revenues. The city's assessed values has increased by 13.66% with approximately 7% attributable to new construction. Assuming a millage rate of 4.1893, we would generate an additional 4.3 million in Ad Valorem revenues. New construction would account for 2.5 million in the balance for your existing properties. State revenues account for approximately 14% of revenues. The half-cent sales tax is projected at 4.3 million. The state revenue sharing is projected at 1.3 million, and the communication services tax at 2.9 million. Charges for services account for 11% of revenues. This includes 2.4 million for parks and recreation, 3.6 for internal services, and 572 is the balance for others. The other revenues excluding intra-fund transfers and appropriated fund balance account for approximately 10%. Do we have any questions on revenues before we move to expenditures?
Question. Councilman Clufus, any question?
I have none. Thank you, Helena.
You're welcome.
Very good. Proceed.
Thank you. This is a breakdown of the general fund expenditures. So the only change since your August 27th presentation was to add back $87,000 to the law enforcement budget. That was the amount that was to be made up from the impact fees. As shown, the proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 25 is $61.1 million, an increase of 5.3 million from fiscal year 2024, or 9.5%. As you can see, throughout all of these budgets, there were regular operational increases, as well as increases for health insurance coverage and the salaries, as Ms. Johnson mentioned earlier. There's only one new position for the streets maintenance budget. We are proposing to bring back frozen positions for the city manager and clerk's office, communications and marketing, and human resources, as we discussed in various budget presentations.
How many positions?
New positions? We have one new position.
Of the frozen ones?
There are three frozen.
How many?
Three frozen positions in administrative services and two in public works streets.
How do we, why do we define them as frozen? They're new hires, correct? I mean, they haven't been hired before.
So those were positions from the 2024 budget that was held frozen, because revenues...
That we did not fill. Is that correct?
That is correct. They were not filled positions.
Now you're proposing to fill them, correct?
That is correct.
So these would be new hires. Why play semantics? I think this is insulting to the public. You know, a business would call this a new hire. Anyone would call it a new hire. I, I mean, these games. I'm sorry. We should not be using language to hide stuff. It's a new hire. Just call it what it is. It really is just totally wrong. Totally wrong.
Okay. Continue.
So the construction management engineering budget reduction is related to the completion of the council priority for the residential speed study. The economic development increase is related to funding for the UCAP Small Business Development Center at 68,000 and 161,000 for the SAP Objective Number Eight, which is to enhance economic development efforts and attract major employers. Planning the vision budget, just regular personnel increases in salary and benefits. The code budget remains relatively flat. The reduction in personnel was related to long-term employees retiring. An additional code officer position is currently funded per council's direction. The fire department budget proposed increase reflects the needs associated with the expansion in the southern response area. The increase in personnel reflects three positions budgeted for six months in the current year. EMTs being promoted to paramedics and annual salary increases. The sheriff's contract includes, as Ms. Johnson stated earlier, additional deputies, contractual increases, and increases for cost of living and health insurance premiums. Parks and recreation budget as a whole is increasing 506,000 encompasses Parks General, Palm Harbor Golf Course, the Aquatic Center, Southern Rec facility, as well as Parks Maintenance. There are no new positions requested for these departments per council's direction August 13th. We increased the Arts Council grants in this budget as requested. We also expanded the Southern Recreation Center hour, operating hours on weekends, and an additional USDA tournament has been added. Do we have any questions on the general fund expenditures before we move forward to proprietary funds?
Questions at this point? Councilman Clufus, any questions to this point?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Nope? Proceed.
Thank you. The proprietary funds were presented and reviewed with council in great detail at the July 23rd budget workshop and at the August 27th workshop. There have been no changes in these funds from your August 27th presentation. Water and wastewater operation fund increase of 17.7% from the previous fiscal year adopted budget, mainly due to the increase in personnel and operating costs. Not only...
budget, mainly due to the increase in personnel and operating costs, not only due to growth, but also due to inflation, as well as three new position requests, which is two meter technicians and one utility engineer. The water and wastewater capital fund is increasing by 19.5% from the previous fiscal year's adopted budget. There are several contributing factors, such as a number of grants, mainly related to the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which include a combination of county funds and city funds. State appropriations for 2 million and approximately 8.4 million in state resolving, revolving fund loan proceeds for the completion of wastewater treatment plant number two expansion. The stormwater management budget increase of 44% from the previous fiscal year adopted budget is due to both capital and operational increases. The budget includes 10 new full-time positions as outlined in the rate study to enhance the swale, maintenance rehabilitation, and address stormwater infill lot drainage. These positions are two equipment operator, threes, three equipment operator, twos, a swale specialist, temporary maintenance worker, stormwater systems foreman, finance tech, and a engineering tech. The building fund is increasing by 10.5%. There were no new positions requested for fiscal year 2024. The increase is due to regular personnel and operational increases. The collection and sanitation fund budget has increased by 12% from the previous fiscal year's adopted budget to accommodate the current contract for solid waste, residential services, and for the addition of a compliance hauling officer. The information technology enterprise fund accounts for the fiber and cell tower revenues and expenditures. The fund has remained relatively flat. Before we move forward, does council have any questions on the proprietary funds?
Questions. Councilman Clufus?
None, thank you very much.
No, please proceed.
This is a summary of all other remaining funds. There were no changes from your August 27th presentation. The Community Development Block Grand Fund accounts for several programs, including housing rehab assistance to the community. The Police Education Fund is used for specialized deputy training. These funds are collected from fines within the city through the clerk of court and then submitted to the sheriff's office. The Disaster Reserve Fund is used to account for any federal assistance usually associated with hurricanes. The Special Events Fund is funded by the recycling revenue from our solid waste contract. Some of the current events planned from these funds are the Holiday Parade, Arbor Day, July 4th fireworks, and the tree lighting ceremony. The Streets Improvement Fund budget includes 6.3 million for the streets rehabilitation and renewal program. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund includes funding for the London Waterway Expansion, Fire Station 22, and Wastewater Plant One, Old Kings Road Force Main Edition. Again, these funds need to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and expended by December 31st, 2026. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program, this is the balance left in the program. The fund and the community development staff is working with respective state agencies to transfer these to the CDBG program. The State Road 100 Community Redevelopment Agency Fund budget for fiscal year 25 is 3.5 million, and there have been no changes since your August 27th presentation. The Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund budget for fiscal year 25 is 1.6 million. This includes 750,000 for a road study funded by grants and 500,000 for design. There have been no changes since your August 27th presentation. Are there any questions before...
Questions? Councilman Clufus?
None here, thank you very much.
Just remind me again the, the ARPA fund deadline?
We have to have the funds by December...
Obligated by December 31st of this year and spent by December 31st of 2026. And right now, we're on target to meet both deadlines.
I'm sorry, well, the spent date is what?
December 31st, 2026.
Got it, thank you, okay.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Okay, we will now move to the capital projects fund budgets. Staffer reviewed these in detail with council at the August 13th and 27th workshops, and there have been no changes from them. The Transportation Impact Fee Fund budget increased by 60% from the previous year fiscal adopted budget. This includes 10.3 for Matanzas Woods Parkway, 7.2 million for White View Safety Improvement, 8.6 million for Old Kings Road Widening, and 5.8 million for Beltair Safety Improvements. These are tied to grants. The Town Center Transportation Impact Fee Fund for fiscal year 25 is 900,000 for Royal Palms Parkway. The Recreation Impact Fee Fund budget decreased by 56% from the fiscal, previous fiscal year adopted budget, which included building of the Southern Recreation Center. The Fire Impact Fee Fund budget for fiscal year 2025 is 16 million. This includes 8 million for Fire Station 26 and 8 million for Fire Station 22 replacement. The Capital Projects Fund budget for fiscal year 25 is 19 million. This includes 10.7 million for the Maintenance Operations Complex. Are there any questions?
I have none.
Question. Councilman Clufus?
None, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So, as you can see, the focus of the capital projects fund will be the Maintenance and Operations Complex, upgrades to Fire Station 25, and the IT infrastructure upgrades. The Street Improvement Fund focuses on the pavement program. The Transportation Impact Fee Fund will include Beltair and White View Safety Improvements, as well as Matanzas Wood Extension and the Old Kings Road North Widening. The Recreation Impact Fee Fund will focus on the Grand Swamp Trail and Long Creek Nature Preserve. Utility capital projects will include the wastewater plant number two expansion that is being funded by the state revolving fund loan, as well as other system improvement projects. The Stormwater Management Fund includes several capital improvements that are being funded using both state revolving funds and bank loans. The Fire Impact Fee Fund will focus on Fire Station Number 22 and 26's design and construction. Before we move forward, does council have any questions on capital fund budgets?
I have none.
None here.
Okay, no questions, please go forward.
We will now review the Internal Service Funds. We reviewed these in detail with council at the July 9th, August 13th, and 27th workshops, and there have been no changes. The city has four Internal Service Funds. This is how we budget for departments that provide day-to-day services and support to other city departments. The Fleet Fund is decreasing by 7%. This fund fluctuates depending on the capital purchases under the fleet replacement program. The Facilities Management Fund has remained relatively flat. The Emergency Communications Fund is used to account for the maintenance and replacement of emergency communication radios. The increase of 27% from the previous year's fiscal, year's adopted budget is due to the increased rental fee and future replacement cost of the emergency communication system. The IT Internal Services Operation Fund is include, is increasing by 11% due to a new position requested for one programmer, as well as increase in regular operating expenditures and centralized software purchases. The Health Insurance Fund, increase of 18.4% is due to regular cost increases, includes claims, admin fees, stop-loss insurance, wellness program, and other related expenses. Are there any questions?
Councilwoman Pontieri?
One question, the increase in the Health Insurance Fund of 1.4, was that included in the, I'm assuming that was included in the increase for the general fund expenditures?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have none, thank you.
So, this is a big picture look of all fund expenditures. As you can see, the total of all funds is approximately 421 million. This represents an increase of 17.8% from your fiscal year 2024 adopted budget. Water and wastewater utility account for approximately 37%. Capital projects, streets improvement, impact fee funds account for approximately 21%. Your general fund accounts for approximately 15%. Stormwater, 11%, and the balance of all others for the remaining 16% of the budget. We will now go over the truth and mileage. This is a look at the mileage rate options. So, your rollback rate is 3.9961. The adopted maximum mileage rate is 4.2154, and the proposed fiscal year 2025 mileage At your next public hearing, your next steps are to adopt the final fiscal year 2025 budget and mileage rate. The final public hearing will be on Wednesday, September 18th, here at City Hall at 5:15 PM. We want to remind the public that on our website, we have copies of all the budget worksheets and supporting documentation to all of our presentations, as well as copies of our presentations. Questions from...
Questions from council at this time?
Last week, I, I think it was a week ago, I asked you what our reserve, actual reserve fund was, and you didn't quite have that number. Did you give that to me today?
City manager, didn't you show, okay.
Yes, so your general fund balance for September 30th, 2023 was 20 million point one.
20 million point one is our reserve. And by law, we're required to keep how much?
So, city council's fund balance policy...
Not, just by law, what are we required to do?
I'm not sure that there's an established reserve.
There are laws...
No, it's, it's just city policy, our policy. It's our policy.
So, our policy is, how much are we required to have?
10 to 20%.
10 or 20%?
Two, two.
10 to 20%.
I'm sorry?
10 to 20%, it's a range.
Is there a range?
Yes.
So, at 10%, how much would we be required to have then? How much would that be? If we meet that minimum requirement, how much would we be required to have?
So, a little over 2 million.
I'm sorry?
Of the expenses, a little, I'm sorry, a little bit over 6.1 million.
I, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you. Say again?
So, your general fund budget for fiscal year 2025 is approximately 61 million point one. So, you would be required at a minimum to have 10% of that balance in reserves.
So, about $6 million?
That is correct.
6 million?
That is correct.
We have 20 right now, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
So, we got a lot of leeway there following our own policy, obviously. Not saying go down to 6 million, but we could find $2 million there to do this full mileage rate rollback without cutting a thing. I just want to bring that to the attention of our council. We have 20, we're only required to have 6. We take out 2, we have 18 left. That's a lot of money. Certainly exceeds our requirement. Am I correct?
It's, are you asking...
I'm asking.
So, it's a, it's a policy decision, so we've heard your comment. Councilwoman Pontieri, comment on the budget?
I have a question. The appropriated fund balance in the amount of 1.033, what, do we have that earmarked for anything right now?
Yes, so, that is made up of a number of different items. If you'll give me a second, I'll give you the exact detail. So, the comprehensive plan, land development code update portion of that is about 175,000. The economic development carryover, it's about 162, 175,000, 162,000. Fire machinery and equipment, about 63,000. Golf equipment, 34,000. And contingency and value adjustment, more 600,000. That brings your total to 1,033,650.
Okay, so, those monies, that's not money that we're rolling over from anything, that's, we've already got that budgeted for other items?
That is coming from your reserves for items already identified in the budgets, that is correct.
Okay, so, we dipped into reserves for this amount?
Yes, we also, if I may, dipped into reserves for the transfer for the Fire Station 22 and 26, that's 2.5 million.
And I, and I was getting there, so I appreciate that. So, to your point, Vice Mayor, I understand what you're saying, you know, we quote, have the money in our reserves. My issue from a poly, policy perspective in doing that is we could make that excuse every single year, and then we're just dwiddling down our reserves year after year after year in order to save the average taxpayer anywhere between, you know, $15 and $30 on their, on their yearly tax bill if they're homesteaded. So, I have an issue with continuing to, as a policy decision, considering our reserve balance when we need things like the fire station, because we didn't get appropriations for the fire station. I just, as a, as a, from a policy perspective, I have an issue with that. And I, I, I think that the reserve fund should be for emergencies, and it should also be for one-time costs. In other words, if we have a one-time expenditure of the fire station, then we can dip into that. You could always lower the mileage rate, that's a year after year thing, and I, and I think that's a lack of discipline on the behalf of us up here and staff, because if we just say we can continue to dip into our reserves, there's nothing motivating us to be more fiscally responsible year after year. So, from a policy perspective, I can't support that. I think that there are other things that we should, if we're going to dip into the reserves, there are other things that we should look to do that for, i.e. improvement of roads. We have a lot of mileage of roads in this city, we're unique in that way. So, you know, if we could pull a million dollars to improve roads in 2026, because after 2025, we have no extra money for roads. So, if I'm going to look into pulling for, for reserves for, for things that are recurring in nature, like improvement of roads, I would rather do that than as a, from a policy perspective, reduce mileage. The other thing that I want to point out, when you reduce mileage, it's not just for that year. It's not as if, if we, you know, when we did the rollback last year, we rolled back and it, and it, I believe it cut, what, 2.5 million from the budget? So, it didn't just cut 2.5 million from the budget last year, it cut 2.5 million from the revenues this year, and it will next year and the year after. So, if we continue to roll back, we're continuing to lose revenues year after year after year. We did it last year because I think that we wanted to set the standard that we're going to be very fiscally responsible, we knew there was a lot of fat to cut. In this budget, I candidly don't see a lot of fat, and city manager has already rolled back the mileage rate a little bit twice, because we have instructed her twice, look for more cuts, look for more cuts, and she's done that. So, at this juncture, I have to go with the reduced mileage rate that we've come up with. So, we are still rolling back, we're not creating the full rollback, and I cannot support dipping into the reserves to do that.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments.
Hold on, let me get Councilman Clufus, and then we'll go back again. Councilman Clufus, any comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think that it is important that we do not try to use reserves for these type of expenditures. I would piggyback on Councilwoman Pontieri's comments. I would also say, I don't think the budget that we cut last year did have a lot of fat. We didn't fund the Maintenance Operations Center last year, and we pushed that expense onto this year. We basically just pushed that out a year, it wasn't necessarily fat to cut. So, there's a, a little bit of context that deserves to go along with that. But, yeah, my advice to current and future councils is that these are not the rainy days that we are trying to use this money that we've been able to save over our current and previous administrations. I would say if we're looking to have a dedicated funding source for paving and things like this in the future, that recognizing, asking for a half-cent sales tax implementation from the county is, is a much better option than trying to dwindle down our reserves, which, you know, represents the fiscal prudence of current and previous councils. That's my comment, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor, one second. My only comment is, we have, as a council, agreed or voted or approved pushing several of the agenda items forward to the next city council, city manager, for example, and others. Making a, a decision regarding policy does add some handcuffs to the next council. The next council, which we have shown support for, would have every ability to consider changing or looking into the reserve fund budgets and, and challenging those numbers. I, I'm uncomfortable with shackling the next council by this kind of one-time decision. I don't totally disagree that if I look back historically, I think there is monies, and I like the idea of additional support for road improvement. But I'm also going to go along with what you all have expressed an interest in doing, and letting the new city council work through that, you know, beginning in, you know, November, December for the next year. So, that's my comment, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Well, setting the mileage rate right now has nothing to do with the next city council. This is, this is our job to do. They all get to do it next year for their own budget. But when I look at $20 million in reserve and realize we don't have to have that much in there and, and still be following our policy, I see nothing wrong with removing 2 million, because a lot of our citizens, especially our seniors, they're dipping into their reserves, and their reserves are very, very tight. And, and they don't have such huge increases in what their social security checks are going to be, or their retirement's going to be. And I think we have to pay attention to that, because we may say it's just a small amount here, but then it's a small amount from the school tax, it's a small amount from the county tax, it's a large amount from the price of groceries, price of gasoline, the price of car insurance, home insurance. God forbid you have to put a new roof on your house, because after 20 years... God forbid you have to put a new roof on your house, because after 20 years, that's what the insurance companies are demanding. So I, I think that we're not paying attention to those citizens, especially our seniors, by hiring more people, and not even calling them new hires, that's deceitful, as far as I'm concerned, and then looking at some of the expenses that we have. Now, I want us to do a new maintenance operation facility, a MOC, as we've been calling it, but why do we have to spend 10 million? We can't just spend 9 million on it this year and save a few things? I think we need to give our public a break. They have suffered enough under Bidenomics. I mean, come on, we all have. Well, maybe, maybe not you, Mr. Mayor, I know you spend more money on hay for your horses than most of us spend on food every week, but I think we need to show a little compassion to our senior population, especially our senior population. So I can't vote for anything but a full mileage rate rollback. We're talking $2 million. We could take a million from the MOC, a million from the reserve funds, there's a lot of ways to do this. Maybe sell this golf course. You know, our golf course lost $434,000 last year, which we weren't told about when we were setting the, the increases. When you and I were discussing what to charge folks from out of town to play golf in Palm Coast, and we came to a compromise number, we didn't know how much money this golf course lost, and it's lost money from the day we've taken that golf course over. So I, I'm sorry, I can't see our taxpayers funding things like that, and, and then we raise their taxes. Because make no mistake, this will be a tax increase, and you might say it's a small amount, but to seniors that are skipping meals, and there are seniors out there that are skipping meals because of the price of groceries, it's more than a small amount.
All right, thank you for that. Councilman Clufus, any final comment before I go to the public?
No comment, no final comment, thank you very much.
Mayor, may I just?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, that's okay. So I just do want to point out that the general fund expenditure, which I think it's very important to understand, that the general fund is what affects the mileage rate. The other capital project funds and the proprietary funds and all of those don't affect the mileage. The general fund expenditures went up by 5.3 million dollars, and out of that, 1.282 was for fire, and 1.545 was sheriff, the sheriff's contract. The 1.44 was health insurance. That total comes to 4.269 out of the 5.3 increase. I mean, those are necessary increases. We, as a policy decision, have decided we're not going to take from what is needed for fire and police, and we, as a policy, decided that we are going to fund the health insurance. And we all know health insurance costs have gone through the roof, as have home insurance costs. So when we're looking at what's left, that's about a million dollars. When you talk about inflation, the city's costs are not immune from that. And so, and, and keep in mind too, this 1, 1.033 includes a normal COLA that a lot of private entities get, that the, that the sheriff's deputies get, that the county employees get, so that amount also includes COLA. I mean, when you look at the general fund budget, it is very tightly managed. It truly, truly is. When I'm looking at the increase being largely made up of uncontrollable health insurance increases, and then fire and police increases, what we have left for an entire, a, a city of 107,000 residents, really the admin taking care of that city being a million dollars, and that includes a, a very reasonable COLA, I have to say, I think we've done a very good job at, at, at keeping this budget, this general fund budget, very trim. And again, being able to give that slight rollback, it's, I would love to give a full rollback too, but I, like I said, I just can't support dipping into the reserves for it.
Well, I would just say, no offense to you, I hear what you're saying, but I think Grandma and Grandpa would disagree with you.
Okay, you've made your point.
Yeah, and don't interrupt me anymore when I'm speaking, all right? Wait for me to finish the sentence, I'm getting tired of it. This is like the third week in a row, you tend to just step all over me. You're not going to step all over me. Make me, let me make that clear.
At this time, I'm going to open up the discussion to the public. This would be an appropriate time to address the mileage. We have a more formal process coming up, but if you want to make your public comments at this time.
Thank you, Cornelia Downing Manfreay. I do want to address the mileage as, we don't know who will be the next mayor or who the next council will be. I think a rollback to the 3.9 would be helpful to the community, and there are cost, their costs in here, I believe, could be readdressed. The economic development arm, you have a, a Chamber of Commerce, you have somebody in economic development in county, and now you have the city. As a commercial realtor, I don't get a lot of phone calls asking me for economic development assistance. That's an arm that has not been pursued for years in the city. That could be, you know, someplace to be able to cut back on some of the budget items. I do believe you can get to a $2 million reduction. It would be a, a great thing for your successors to inherit something that look, makes you all look good as you move on, for ha, having reduced it at this time. When I look at the final page of the proposed budget summary, I'm, I'm a little scared by seeing 357 million that was adopted, and by what I printed, estimated 2024, do I mean estimated is actual, ladies? Mayor, is estimated actual?
Finish your comment.
I, I'm asking a question, because if, the column says 309 million, so then jumping to 421 million, what are we doing with all that money? Where is it going? I'm a little nervous of how these numbers are laid out. The other thing that is not clear in the budget is, when you talk about grant money, it's not indicated in here that that's grant money. That should be indicated to the public as well. So I am asking that a hard consideration be made to the mileage at 3.9, and review the numbers, and I think with a little bit of tweaking, you can get to that 2 million. It'll just make everybody feel like we all tried a little bit harder. You're outgoing and you're incoming. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. There was a question regarding the definition of part of your presentation.
So the estimated is where we believe we're going to finish the year. A lot of the role forward has to do with where we are on a capital project, so we estimate, you know, how far along it's going to be at the end of September, but sometimes, you know, the balance carries to the next year, because they're multi-year projects.
So historically, how close is it, how accurate has your forecast been, last couple of years?
We haven't had any major variances.
That's, that's my question. So your forecast has been?
Unless there's a capital project, like I said, that moved a little bit further along. I think the Southern Rec Facility in last year had, was running about, had a schedule, and we had a budget amendment for fiscal year 2023 after the year-end.
All right, good, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the discussion at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will come back to city council for final comments. We are going to recess this meeting after these comments, as prescribed by the agenda.
I have none.
Nothing further?
Councilman Clufus.
I have none, thank you.
Very good. With that, I will, for the moment, recess city council and convene the State Road 100 Corridor CRA Board. So we will move to Agenda Letter F, which is the State Road 100 Corridor CRA Resolutions. And I guess, Councilor, I will ask you to read that in for me.
State Road 100 Corridor Community Redevelopment Agency, Resolution 2024-XX, adopting this State Road 100 Corridor CRA tentative budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, and amending the State Road 100 Corridor CRA budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Okay, I, is there any, City Manager, any, any comments? So then I will open, from the dais, any question about the, the, the resolution that was just read?
No, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Councilman Clufus?
None, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will open this item up for public comment. Any member of the public that wishes to address this item at this time would please come Seeing no one from the public come forward, I'll close public comment, back to the dais, no further discussion, I don't think. And what's my next action?
We would need a motion and a, and a second and a vote, of course, on the resolution.
So city council members, I'm asking for a motion regarding the resolution that was just read into the record. We've had public comment.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
A motion to approve the resolution, as read, was made by Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second from Councilman Clufus, is there any additional discussion?
I have none.
No additional discussion, so with that, I would go ahead and ask the clerk to do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the State Road 100 CRA Board and reconvene the city council meeting. These are, again, prescribed by, by law. So we now move to the next set of resolutions under Agenda Letter G. The first resolution, I have to read verbatim by ordinance. The City of Palm Coast proposes to levy a tentative mileage rate of 4.1893 mils. This is an increase of 4.83% from the rolled back rate of 3.9961 mils. So with that, I would open this item up to the public for public comment. Seeing no one from the public come forward, I will move to our action item, which is to adopt the tentative mileage rate resolution. The City of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a tentative mileage rate of 4.1893.
What does tentative mean? Does we have to vote on this again?
Yes, two, two readings, that's why the word tentative. Now, I don't require another motion, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't require a motion, I've just read the motion in, correct?
We need a motion. We still need a motion and a second.
A motion on top of what I just read?
Yes.
All right. So then I will ask for a motion from the city council.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving setting the tentative mileage rate for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 at 4.1893 mils.
Councilwoman Pontieri has made a motion to accept the resolution. Is there a second from city council?
Oh, I'm sorry, I second.
Can you be more clear?
I second the motion made by Councilwoman.
Thank you. City, Councilman Clufus has seconded the motion. Now, back to the dais for discussion.
I have no further discussion.
Okay. All right, then, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Aye.
The motion passes three to one.
We now move to City Resolution Agenda Letter G, and this would be number four. The City of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a tentative budget with total appropriated expenditures and reserves of 421,551,721 dollars. With that said, I will open this item up for the public for comment at this time. Seeing no one come forward for public comment, I'll close public comment. My next step is, the action item is to adopt the tentative budget resolution, and the announcement is read, "The City of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a tentative budget of The public hearing?
No, we need a motion.
You want your motion now? Okay, then I would ask city council for a motion.
I'll make a motion adopting the tentative budget of 421,500, I'm sorry, 421,551,721 dollars.
So Councilwoman Pontieri has made a, a motion to accept the, the resolution. Is there a second?
I second the motion made by Councilwoman Pontieri.
Councilman Clufus has seconded the motion, I'll come back to the dais for any additional public, any additional, I'm sorry, comment?
The only thing that I want to comment is, I would like to address in the future, not tonight, but I would like to address in the future, the transfer policy of general fund monies into our stormwater management fund. I would like to readdress that in the future, but other than that, I have no discussion.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilman Clufus, any final comment?
I have no final comment, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, we've had public comment, then I would go ahead and ask the clerk to call the vote by roll.
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to one.
We've now moved to Agenda Letter H, which is our?
When you have the opportunity to?
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed a step.
To announce the public hearing?
The public hearing to adopt the final mileage rate and budget is scheduled for September 18, 2024, again at 5:15 PM at the Palm Coast City Hall in the community wing. Okay? That takes care of my legal requirements. So with that, we would move forward now to the public participation on items not previously discussed in tonight's agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to address me with public comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and I would ask for any discussion by city council on matters that were not on this evening's agenda. Councilman Clufus?
I have none, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hearing none, I will move forward to the city attorney, any comment?
No comment.
I move forward to the city manager, any final comment?
No comments, Mayor.
I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to, I have a motion to adjourn from Councilwoman Pontieri, a second from Vice Mayor, we all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.